Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna start our study session today in regards to the CSO levy. We are waiting for Martin from Plant Moran to get on. And while we're waiting, I'd like to ask Councilman Zohair Abdul Haq if he could just, I know you had some concerns and some questions, and I do know that many a times myself and others have spoken with Martin from Plant Moran in regards to this. So might as well at least start just with some of your concerns, comments, etc.
I'm going to give little history about the CSO and why we are talking about it. Okay. Give me a second, please. In 2015, the administration asked Miller Camfield law firm to write an opinion about the over levy of the CSO. We go back to 2000, to 1997, the voters on September 9, 1997, voted to basically pass a bond for $27 million, which contained many things beside the Wayne County bonds for the CSO and Azar Basins. And we paid at that time 9% interest rate. In 2001, 2003, the city received the $3,600,000 in some dollars refund from a bond which was issued in 1994. And since that time, the administration, over the next 12 to 13 years, they basically overcharged the residents on that bond. And even they have enough money to pay the obligation during the years from 2004 to 2015, they still levied between 1.25 mils to 2.65, which is illegal. Because the voters in 2000, in 1997, passed 2.5 mils. But at some years, there was charges of 2.65 mils for that bond, which was illegal to overcharge what the voters basically voted for. I just want to read one thing from Act 34 of 2001. Section four. If there is a surplus money on hand for the payment of principal or interest at the time of making an annual tax levy, then the provision has not been made in the authorizing resolution for the disposition of that money. The annual levy for a principal or interest shall shall be adjusted to reflect available funds. The previous administration, the previous city council, the previous whoever was involved in preparing the budget over the years, including the mayor's staff, the mayor, the treasurer, and different controllers. They did not follow the law. They basically levied levied taxes on the residents, even they had money which can pay for two or three years in advance and save the 9% interest. But they did not. They failed to do this. Now, the reason I'm bringing this, this is not against God rest him in peace, Mayor Palatko or anybody. But we have a bond of $25,700,000 coming up. I'm going to ask the controller, the mayor, the treasurer, and the city council to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And all the funds related to specific job, specific project to be put separately and accounted for separately, so there is no intermingling of funds. That's why I am questioning what happened. Because according to the general ledger, I went through from 1999 up to 2019. And I found out that lots of the phases of the project of COO, CSO, was paid in 2009. And nothing was paid until later on, 2015, 16, 17. So money was put basically in the general budget. And we could have paid some of those projects between 2009 and 2015. But we failed to do so. On the contrary, we levied 1.25 from 2011 to 2015, which accumulated close to six and some million dollars over levy. My question to Plant Moran. Why this wasn't really brought forcefully to the administration? Why the city council failed to do their job? Why the treasurer, and the controller, and the mayor, and his assistant failed basically to reduce the levies in those years? And not to keep that money and tell us that we have surplus, which I believe we never had surplus. It was just on papers that we have money which was overlevied to the resident. So I would like to hear from Martin, if possible. What would he suggest? At the city council, in Plant Moran, the mayor, the treasurer, and the controller, what they can do in the future to make sure this doesn't happen again? And this money is disposed of in the proper ways? Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I was able to get ahold of Martin while we're in the middle of the call, and he's getting on right now. As a matter of fact, because I gotta continue running the meeting, is there anybody here that has his phone number? If you could give him a call and send him the link right away?
I don't have it.
Lynn or somebody?
I may have it by email, though.
Dana, are you on? Dana, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shit.
Okay.
I don't wanna.
Give me the phone.
I'm sorry? Okay, more information, give it, send it to Dana, please.
Just give me his phone number and I can text it to him.
Well, I understand, but I don't wanna, he may not want his phone number public.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. I'll send him an email.
He's coming in right now.
He's coming, okay, perfect. Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, hey, cut.
It's alright. You're letting him on?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, Martin? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So Martin, we've started the meeting with our Councilman Zohair Abdul Haq. Abdul Haq, he gave us a little rundown as far as his concerns in regards to this. And I know you and I and other council members, and of course, Zohair Abdul Haq have also spoken with you. Do you want me to give you at least just a short, brief summary as far as what his concerns or his questions are, or do you pretty much know it?
Well, I know the CSO, for example, so I'm happy to discuss that.
Yes, specifically.
Yeah, so I can discuss that, and feel free to interject at any time. Can I share my screen with?
Yes. Councilman Zohair, if you don't mind, do me a favor, since I'm unable to get on, he's having technical difficulties. If you could just give him at least a brief 30 second of your, what your concerns are, if you don't mind.
The other thing is, if I can just add too, if the host will also let, have to let me share my screen ultimately.
Oh, I made you a co-host. Is it not giving you the option?
Maybe it'll let me now, so let me see. It will let me now, so, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so Zohair, you might give a 30 second quick rundown.
My concern, Martin, probably we spoke about it before, that in 2001, we received a fund of $3,600,000 from a bond which was issued in 1994. 1997, September 9, 1997. The voters voted basically to pass $27 million bond which included several projects, which until now, nobody can tell me what they are. And according to Miller Camfield, they couldn't find which projects were including included in that $27 million. Over the years, we noticed that the previous administration have overlevied more than 2.5 mils, which was allowed by the voters. Some years, they levied 2.65 up to 2.65, which accumulated in 2015, 6.8 million dollars.
Okay, Councilman, if you don't mind, we have to wrap it up because we can give Martin enough chances and finish our meeting.
My concern, Martin, are, I just wanna make sure this doesn't happen again with any future administration. And I would like to know why the city council, the mayor, the assistant to the mayor, the treasurer, and different controller did not catch this up, and they knew they are in violation of Act 34 of 2001.
Thank you, Councilman. Martin?
Okay, thank you. So, you know, to answer the question like why they did it or something like that, I can't really answer. I can't, you know, get into their mindset or anything like that. I can tell you what happened and how much money is left. And I'm sharing the screen right now. I think you see an Excel spreadsheet that's got some red lettering at the very top. I'm hoping that's on my screen.
Yes.
Okay, so what I did here, it is a summary that I shared with the council. At the very top, this portion right here that I'm on right now, this is Councilman Zohair's clip, a snippet of the Word document that you shared with me. And it does identify the 6.8 million dollar over levy. And unfortunately, our records don't go too far back in time, but I was able to pick up that 6.8 million right down below here. Then, and I'm in absolute agreement that it was an over levy of 6.8 million dollars at the beginning of the 2015 fiscal year. So during the June 30, 2015 year, at the very beginning, the city did have an over levy of 6.8 million. During that year, the city still levied another $1.3 million. So that added on to that over levy, but at the same time, the city did have principal and interest payments of 1.3 million dollars. So at the end of the year, there was $6,865,000 restricted for this use. Going forward, if you go into the following year, there was that 6.8 million starting point. There was no levy at that point in time. So starting in 2016 fiscal year, the city did not levy anymore for the CSO bonds.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Because the bond was supposed to be paid in 2015 in full.
It actually had still a couple more years remaining. So here in 2016 is another payment. And what I did is I also provided a summary here of all the bond payments that were for the CSO levy. So you can see the bond payment, the 1.288 right here agrees with this 1.288. So you can see exactly what that issuance and what payments were associated with this bond issuance. So these payments did come out of the CSO restricted funds. And then the following year, you can see this 1.248 million ties out exactly to this 1.248 million. So you can see that we still had the substantial bond payment of over a million dollars remaining. So at the end of 2017, again, there were no levies done during those years in 16 and 17. But in total, during those two years, you had over 2.5 million dollars in payment. So at the end of 2017, there's 4,320,000 remaining in the restricted fund, in the restricted fund balance. And then over the next couple of years, you can see that there's still like these, I mean, I'm not saying that these are small dollar amounts, because like if I had this money, I'd be really happy. But in total, it's small in comparison to prior years. So in 18, 19, and 20, there were miscellaneous small CSO borrowings that were remaining for a total of $452,000 in those three years cumulatively. So at the end of June 30th of 20, the city has remaining a $3,868,000. So that's how the balance from 6.8 million that was, the question was raised by Councilman Abdul Haq to the end of June 30th of 2020, or June 30th of 2020, if that's correct. So we have the 3.86 million remaining. Now, this amount, just to kind of make it easier, and I wanted to make sure you can relate to where it is in the financial statements. I also, in the spreadsheet that I sent to the council, I included snippets from the financial statements. And these are truly pictures of, from the financial statements that were audited, and there have been submitted to state. So you can see exactly where these dollar amounts are coming from. And then the special levy, for example, here, the 3.8 millions that we just referred to in the summary tab, it, that's how much is restricted. Now, if you go into some of the subsequent tabs, other years, again, each year ties out exactly to these dollar amounts. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify this. And then the other thing is, and I'm sure everybody knows this, but the levy that the cities issuing this year for the 25, 26 million dollars, I don't have the exact dollar amount. The first, so the city's gonna issue the bonds, but immediately, this 3.8 million dollars will be used to pay down for those bonds. So this money is no longer gonna be restricted after this payment's being made because the city's gonna utilize this for the debt payment.
Okay.
You'll enter another, oh, go ahead.
Well, what I was gonna do, just want to make sure we're kind of limited on time, so maybe like a briefing of whatever the next answer is. I give other council members an opportunity to be able to ask questions in case.
Absolutely.
So was there, you said you had another answer?
No, so the only comment I was gonna have is, how do we prevent this, something like this from happening? And how could it even happen to begin with? So, you know, although these years, and I believe, Councilman Abdul Haq, you've seen in our letters, post audit letters, that we did alert the council to this occurring. And that you did have this over levy, and that the balance kept on going up. And I'm sure you saw this too, over, you know, like 2012, 13, 14, the balance kept on going up for the restricted balance. So as your auditors, we will always alert the council to an over levy. And we will always highlight, you know, things that are becoming unusual, or maybe that you might have an issue later down the road. You know, there's gonna be restricted funds used for certain purposes, but we're always gonna be able to communicate with you any unusual circumstances. So number one, we're gonna make sure to communicate that with you. Number two, it is the controller, the controller's office that ends up calculating how much is needed. But it's also comes into the budgets, needs to be approved by the mayor's office, by the council, etc. So there's many checks and balances. It will be communicated, and I'd be surprised if something like this ever happens again. How could this happen over the years before? I, it's hard to say. I'm surprised there was not a lot of action, I guess, taken to reduce the balance earlier. But I also know, if we look at the years that this occurred, it was right after the recession. And during the recession, so the taxable values kept on changing, and the city wanted to make sure that it had enough money to pay for the CSO bonds. If the taxable value decreases, like the millage doesn't just make up the ground, and all of a sudden, you don't have enough money to pay for the principal payments. So there could have been a mindset that, you know what, we wanna make sure that we're levying enough to bring, to have enough revenue to make up these, you know, principal and interest payments. It got clearly out of hand, but you know, 6.8 million dollars is a significant dollar amount. But at the same time, it was going through a recession that's unlike any other recession that we've ever had. Property values were plummeting left and right. So if you assess two mils, but now your property values go down by half, you're literally decreased your revenue by half. So there was a lot of, you know, estimation and so on, and you really didn't have the final answers until the year kind of went by. And like the economy started recovering, that's when you saw how much, you know, your taxable values were really what they were at. So I could see it kind of occurring, but from that angle. But again, we're gonna make sure that we're gonna alert you for anything like this, just like we did in the past.
All right, I got a quick question, Martin, and if that's okay with.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, so I just wanna get this straight, from 2012, and I know you and I went through this, but I just kind of, for the residents that are watching in on this, Martin. So from 2012, every year accumulated, say, we, you know, we levied an extra 200,000, an extra 400,000, an extra 800,000. Because we didn't know based after the 2008 recession, you know, where things were gonna be, or the standings were going to be. And here, we have this extra levy of 3.8 million dollars that we're gonna put straight to the CSO bond that we just recently approved of at 25 million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I don't know the exact dollar amounts. I know that Councilman Abdul Haq accumulated the balance over the years. And the balance didn't just pop up to 6.8 million. It gradually grew. I mean, clearly had to grow by a significant dollar amount every year to get to that 6.8 million. It wasn't, you know, $50,000 here, $50,000 there, but, you know, $400,000 is very likely the right amount that just kept on going up, which it shouldn't have, but it did.
Counselor. Councilman Ray Muscat.
Yeah, Martin, it's disturbing to me, and I know this happened before I became a councilman. How was it put in the records that were being overcharged? I mean, did it just come out and say, you're overlevying the taxpayers by this much? Or was it in a spot where no one can see it or really decipher it? Because, you know, if you're not actually looking for something, I don't think you'll find it, okay? And, and if there was other things in that bond that were not CSO related, you know, how are we charging taxpayers for something that wasn't CSO, being restricted fund? We're doing the same thing now. We were gonna issue a bond to fix water, or replace water meters. We need to separate that money, say, you know, X amount of dollars is for, for the water meters. So we as council people know what actually is a restricted fund. And, and to me, it can't be in, in general government. They should be in a, in a kind of count all by themselves. So how did you show that to the city council, then, that we were being overtaxed?
I will show you if I can find it. Hang on one sec.
And Martin, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just, we gotta keep it brief, if you don't mind. So just in case other council members, because we started a little late, so I wanna make sure we finish as close on time as possible.
No, no problem. So we, every year, we present the post audit letter to the council. And in the post audit letter, and this would have been discussed during the council meetings as well, we talk about any over levies. So that would have been mentioned to the, to the city at that point in time. So it's called either a management letter, or what we call in accounting lingo, it's called AU 260, 265 letter. So it's any significant communication that needs to be shared with those charged with governance, so we made sure that's included in the letter.
Could that money have been used to balance the budget, or to use money for cash flow? Was that used in that purpose?
What ended up happening, so the money, I don't wanna confuse the fund balance. Fund balance is not cash. So fund balance is purely a restricted. So on your balance sheet, you have your assets, which includes cash, minus your liabilities, equals your fund balance, whatever's remaining, sort of. So your assets, if they exceed your liabilities, you have fund balance. In that fund balance, there's a calculation that the city needs to always do is, for any spoken for revenue. So for example, CSO is spoken for revenue because you issued the bonds in order to pay a specific cause. And the taxpayers approved this millage. So what happens is, from day one, you record the revenue that's, you have like a tracking spreadsheet. You put in the revenue that comes in, subtract out all the associated expenses, which are principal and interest payments. And then whatever's left over, you have to restrict the fund balance for that use in the future. And that calculation carries forward until the day that you spend every single dollar from that restriction.
Martin, if I could ask you a quick question. One of the things that we talked about when we spoke with you on the phone last, or I spoke with you last week on the phone. What was the amount approximately, and I'm not by any sense of the words justifying this, but what was the amount approximately for like, let's say, a $100,000 home that a homeowner was paying extra in taxes? And I like to simplify to the.
Well, it's going back down to like the high 30, we get another 40 some.
And there's somebody else? Okay, go ahead, Martin.
So I guess the question I would have is, how many households do you have in the city of Dearborn Heights?
I believe approximately 23,000. Yeah, 23,000.
So what ends up happening, so it's a $6.8 million over levy, which occurred over many years, accumulated approximately $295 in total per household. So what does that mean? So if this is over a 10-year period, it's probably around $29 per household. What that translates to, however, in the future, is that now you don't have to levy this amount, or raise it from water and sewer rates for the bonds coming up. So in that sense, it's a wash, quote unquote. But there is the question like, why did the over levy occur to begin with? It shouldn't have happened. Now the current residents should be paying for it. So that's the big question, Martin.
Yeah, and my belief is what happened was wrong. And that's one of the reasons, if you remember, a few council meetings back, I said one of the things that we should implement is, and I was in favor of it, and I know some other council members were in favor of it, of hiring your firm to not only tell us what things were of issue on the audit, but then come back every maybe 60 days and see how far our administration's gotten as far as implementing those items. And then, you know, moving forward and making sure that we implement them so that administration, with due respect to all administrations, are not left to, I guess, if you wanna call it for lack of better word, self-police. And so personally, for those council members, obviously, we're all on here, but I think this is a direction, in my opinion, we should go towards. Councilman Zohair, if you don't mind, I'm just, if there's any other council members that have questions, because other council members have any questions at Alfred Martin, or Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Council. I just wanted to actually ask that question, Councilman Zohair brought up. I mean, a good point, you know, with, if, when we meet the bond, is there a way that we can actually shut it down, that we, okay, we met the requirement? So I wanna see if there's a mechanism that we can actually say, okay, you know what, whatever money that we had allocated, okay, that's it, we're done. So does that make sense, Martin? I don't know if there's a mechanism in place to do that.
Yes, so honestly, the best mechanism would be when you're budgeting for the subsequent year, making sure you compare the principal and interest payments for the, you know, the new bonds that you're gonna have, the 25, 26 million dollars. And making sure that your revenue that's projected to be on those bonds, making sure that's not too high in comparison with, again, the principal and interest payments, as well as what your restricted fund balance already is, if there is a restricted fund balance. Clearly, after you make this first payment of the 3.8 million dollars associated with this new bond issuance, your restricted balance is gonna be starting at zero. But then you're gonna have to compare all your revenues associated. That's if you were levying property taxes for the payout payoff of the bonds. In your case, you're gonna be actually utilizing the water and sewer rates to pay for the bonds, unless there's a change down the road, but you're planning on using water and sewer rates. So technically, there's gonna be no restricted amount, because it's just water and sewer rates are supposed to pay for water and sewer fund expenses in total, which include these bond payments. So you don't have to necessarily worry about an over levy associated with this, but if you ever have a levy again in the future for any other bond payments or any other purpose, you always wanna, again, compare the two to make sure that you're not over levying compared to your expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other council members?
Dave?
Yes.
I have last a question for Martin. Martin, this, this money over levy, it was invested by the treasurer over the years. Did you or the administration accounted for all the interest we earned on this money over 12, 13 years?
So what ends up happening is the money stays in, within the water and sewer fund. And what happens is, yes, there's interest that comes in, so the interest earnings stay within the water and sewer fund. You can't just transfer, I guess, interest earnings from one fund to another to use, you know, for the purchase of a fire truck or something like that. It does have to stay in there.
Did it stay restricted?
What ends up happening is the revenues, not the interest, the revenues are compared from the property taxes are compared to the principal and interest payments. The interest is utilized within the water and sewer fund to pay water and sewer fund expenses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other council members, and we're gonna kind of wrap it up, because I know we have our regular meeting. Is there any other council member?
Mr. Abdullah?
Mister Abdullah, our treasurer, has a question.
Okay. Where she, you want to let her in? Lisa, you want to go ahead?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, thank you. Um thank you for a floor for a moment. Um I wanted to say, first of all, to the council members, um really well done. This is a very important issue. And as your um treasurer, I duly noted this, and I've been looking at ways that it's treasure what I can do to help prevent that from happening, like overpayment, over capturing, over living. So um I've already started this and you're gonna see this on March the ninth in your current claims. Every single debt payment schedule that we have, I have those all outlined, um you will be getting a current claim that you will review and it will actually give you the amount that's being paid, is it against interest, is it against principal, and I'm gonna give you the balance as well. So you're gonna get the balance of the interest and balance of the interest or interest of the balance on principal. And so you're gonna have all that information. So you're gonna see it. So I know, I've noted that council members want to see what is the ending balance after the payment. So you'll be able to see that, or you should, right, through those current claims. And like I said, you're gonna start seeing that with current um scheduled debt that we have next month. I've already started that. Regarding um what Councilman Abdul Haq said absolutely, where he mentioned separate accounts. Um and that's clearly in our charter, by the way, section five point six, um item G. So I'm looking, and that is absolutely will um adhere to that. And I wanted to just again commend you because I think it's very important. We don't let this happen again. And I will do whatever I need to do and can do to make sure it doesn't, as try here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any other council members have any questions?
Thank you, Martin.
No problem. I apologize for uh my little bit more casual. But I didn't realize the meeting I was needed today, so I'm glad I could answer your questions.
Very informative.
So at this particular point, we're gonna end our study session and we're gonna take a break. Uh bye. You are clerk. I'm muted. Okay, so clerk, Madam Clerk, we're gonna take a break for five, uh make five, six minutes and then start our regular meeting in about six minutes.
Dana Parrish was, tried to raise his hand, and Gary Miyaki.
Unfortunately, where's? The, the, the challenge that we've got, Mr. Mayor, is because we started late, I don't want to start our next meeting. Uh if they could stay on, uh.
Yeah, I don't know what Mister Miyaki is.
Should we go ahead?
You know what, Lynn, you know what I'm gonna do? Uh Gary and Dana Parrish is uh Martin Staln. I think he got off though.
No, he's here. I, I still see him. Yeah, he's here.
So Dana Parrish and Gary, I'm gonna give you guys just out of courtesy, a minute each to ask you questions. And Martin, if you could give a brief, brief answer, please, because you don't want to be late to the next meeting. Thank you.
Pro Tem, um I was just going to comment that uh you have to provide up to two minutes for someone to address during the study session for public comment, specifically the matter that was raised.
Because, okay, because of the topic, because of the topic, right?
On the topic, two minutes at the end of the time that everyone else speaks. So that's part of the council rules quarter.
Sure, no problem. So then we will take public comments, no more than two minutes? Is that okay?
Yes, yes, I will ask Dana to unmute himself. I'll start my, as soon as he's ready.
I'm ready.
You ready, Mr. Parrish? I'm gonna start the clock.
Okay, um when the gentleman from Plant Moran, I don't want to use his first name and I cannot pronounce his last name.
Martin.
Okay, hook on Martin.
Much easier.
Um in December, um I, I brought up the point of uh uh revenue sharing from the federal government, and I asked him about his, his feeling or his opinions on revenue sharing, and he said he believed it would increase in the coming years. I did some research. I pulled down some information from the Brookings Institute, the Center of Budget Priorities. Their information is quite to the contrary. I also pulled down some information in the Center of Budget and Policy Priorities. And they said that uh state and local shortfalls will exceed five hundred billion dollars next year. And the Economic Policy Institute in June said without federal and state, without federally, state and local government, workers can look at five point three million less jobs throughout the United States. I would, I, I was just wondering where Martin is getting his information about, about uh state and local revenue sharing from the federal government increasing versus decreasing. Because every source I've researched said that federal revenue sharing because of COVID is going to go down.
Yeah, so the, to answer your question, so the revenue sharing comes from the state of Michigan, not from the federal government that I was referring to.
It trickles from the federal government to the states, to the cities.
It's actually, so it's state money that comes in from sales tax um at the state of Michigan. So it is state, within the state, uh it's under the control of state of Michigan. If you compare two thousand nineteen to the projections of two thousand twenty based on the state budget uh that was uh discussed um back in um November, December timing, the state was projecting to actually have an increase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. It doesn't mean it's not a shortfall from years past. Uh it was supposed to start trickling back up based on their projections. Now, COVID nineteen does uh play a significant role in that uh from the perspective that um the state shared revenues is just a projection and best guess by the state of how much the state's gonna actually collect from sales taxes. But with COVID nineteen, uh it's very hard to predict like what's gonna happen with the spending, with unemployment going up, with um not knowing with certainty what uh federal government's gonna do with stimulus packages and, and sharing money with residents that are, you know, unemployed or are hurting. Um the spending isn't exactly where it needs to be. So I absolutely agree that very likely the state share revenues might not be what the state of Michigan is projecting or projected back a few months ago. Uh but at the time, uh when we had the meeting, uh it was projected to at least slightly increase. I would always caution the city, and I believe I mentioned that uh during the meeting, is I would caution the city to keep checking the state of Michigan website uh with the projections of what the state shared revenues are gonna be for the city. Um because that's very important because it does change in this, um the city receives the state share revenues every two months. So you know, there's a budgeted amount, projected amount versus the actual. So I would always caution the city to keep an eye on that because it can change literally from uh week to week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
So I'm sorry if you misunderstood earlier.
No problem. Next, we have our resident Pamela Deng. I hope I pronounced that nice name.
Well, my, my name is Pamela Traskis.
Okay.
I was wondering, um am I too late to say no to this merger with Dearborn Police?
So we're gonna have on agenda items, we're gonna have at the regular meeting, we're gonna have an opportunity for all the residents to be able to say their part up to two minutes, and that will be at the next meeting, and next maybe five minutes or so starting, five, seven minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the residents? Okay, I'd like to end the study session and start our meeting eh at seven twenty.
Thank you.
Sounds good.